That was a new one. It's for college towns.
Okay, everybody, we're back to committee hall. We have eight items. The seventh item where it says consideration of cities propose update for critical areas ordinance, that was dealt with this morning, so that won't be on the agenda this afternoon. So we have eight items. The first item is adoption of the 2015-2016 mid-biennial budget modification ordinance. Brian, go ahead.
All right. Brian Hinshaw, Finance Department. Thank you. Since October, we've been discussing the modifications to the 2015-2016 budget. The list, the ordinance is in your packet on page 138, 139, and 140, and then there's a complete detailed list also that's been on the city's website and also lists out each and every change by fund and activity. I did want to bring to your attention a couple of points. The first one is a typo. I made a mistake on the fiscal impact, so where it has $7,543,132,000 of increased revenues, there's $9,588,59 of expenditures, not $6,58. And that is also in the memo on the next page, too. But I did want to point out that your last meeting, we did talk about the movement of $92,000 approximately of revenue from the BTV PEG access television channel funds to the general fund, and that was somewhat to pay for the next three items, but we never took formal action on those three items. So those are increased human services grants by $18,000, increased library branch hours by $46,000, and a downtown live music business tax exemption, which would incentivize live venues downtown, which would decrease city revenues by about $20,000. So all three of those total about $84,000 of added impacts to the general fund, and I wanted to pull those out separately and make sure you took formal action on those first. Those are included in the numbers that I gave you for all the detail, assuming that they were going to go forward, because that's kind of what your last indication was, that those would go forward, but it's up to you to take action on those, and we can pull them out if you'd like to discuss them further or change your mind on those. On page 138, that's the fund listing of the budget changes, so I just go through all the different categories. The very first one is the general fund, where we start with the actual reserves in the general fund of $17,725 for 2015. The two-year combined general fund revenue now is $142,047. We are increasing those revenues by $559,000. And then the new two-year expenditure total is $144,912, and we're increasing general fund expenditures by $1,124 over this biennium. So the ending estimated reserve now in 2016 would be $14,295, and that's the way you read that, all the way across by fund, and that's by funds for all of the city. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Jack?
Move approval as modified and as amended with the one typo.
Second?
Motion been made in seconded. Any further discussion? All who are favorable say aye.
Aye.
All who oppose? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you, Brian.
All right, thank you.
Okay, the next item, and I have to admit, I've double-take this about four times, but I'm going to read it. Town gown initiative: Developing a coordinated approach addressing issues associated with off-campus housing and related behaviors. Never heard of that before, but from what I hear, it's been around in other communities for a long time.
So I guess I should preface by saying, what is the gown in town gown?
That's good.
It's a town cap and gown, and a term that's used by the International Association of Town Gowns. It's a group of 200 cities and their related higher educational units that have gotten together to deal with issues that they all find in common, and those issues are remarkably like the issues we deal with. So in a sense, we're replicating that town gown association work on local level, and we come before you today, I'm joined by an interdepartmental and interagency team that includes Officer Eric Osterkamp from the Bellingham Police Department, Carmen Rasmussen from the Campus Community Coalition, and Lindsay Kirshner and Ryan Nelson, planners from the Planning and Community Development Department. The short answer is, it takes a team to address these comprehensive issues, and that although we are making good progress individually in our respective fields, looking at the experience of other communities, we feel that working together, we can more closely meet the expectations of both neighbors as well as residents in the project areas, as well as the students and others, so that they are not taken advantage of, that they become members of our community that contribute for the time they're with us, that they invest in the community itself and in their neighborhood. Towards that end, no shortage. If you went to the Town Gown Association website and you looked at the issues that are posted, and they have hundreds of articles that are posted, the four things seem to bubble to the top. The first is noise in parties. I have it on good authority that college students still participate in this behavior, at least my children tell me that. And while certainly that is part of campus life, and that's certainly part of off-campus life, and while everyone is entitled to have a party now and again, having a party every night is disruptive to the character of the neighborhoods where those students are housed and living. Litter, often the issues at the beginning and end of a quarter or semester, what happens to that couch that had been passed on for generations of students, it typically ends up at the street corner and it becomes a city or other problem for the neighborhood. Parking and traffic, this body has heard numerous comments from a number of neighborhood representatives of the impacts associated with that, and I don't mean to make light of any of these issues. They're very seriously because serious, because if you take them independently, they don't sound so bad, but imagine living in a neighborhood when all of these issues are brought to bear, and brought to bear virtually every night. And finally, we've had an ongoing issue with illegal, unpermitted rental use of single-family and multifamily accommodations, apartments or homes, exceeding our definition of family in many ways being unsafe. Rental registration has done a great deal to address that, and we hope as the course of inspections proceed, we'll be able to get to the bottom of a lot of the illegal units, remove them, but that is an issue, and it is a very challenging issue. Currently, the very positive efforts that are being done incrementally, the police department itself has an ongoing program working with the college police to deal with those disruptive parties. They are ones that are challenging in terms of the time it takes, and we do it in a very good manner, but it is something that is a resource drain, and we've not seen to make great inroads to developing a comprehensive way of dealing with over time. In terms of planning and community development, it is one of the more challenging issues. The family definition by itself is extraordinarily difficult for us to enforce and very easy to thwart. However, some of the behaviors associated with that are ones that are more manageable, and we're trying to focus our efforts and redirect our efforts towards that. In terms of parking enforcement, we do have residential parking zones, RPZs established. They've shown to be good approaches to deal with the number of cars and loading. They are expensive to administer, and you've got to sort that issue out in terms of the cost. And finally, I would say that Western Washington University and the Campus Community Coalition, which represents all of the higher educational institutions in Bellingham, have made notable strides to do something I think is really remarkable, and that's proactively inform the students both on expectations and their rights before they enter into agreements. Fully two-thirds to three-quarters of the students are living off-campus at any given time, and we know that to be inevitable because there's not enough on-campus accommodations. We also know that although many will spend their first year on campus, their second year will be out in the community. Reaching those students initially, establishing expectations, forming them of their rights, telling them to look for, for example, apartments or other units that are registered under the rental registration program or inspected, and not to sign a lease if you don't see that certification, is a really proactive step. If we can cull those adversarial circumstances before they occur, we avoid the ultimate issues that come at the end. Towards that end, we realize that although we're succeeding in these various approaches, that if we work together, we could be mutually supportive and more effective in terms of our efforts, and that there are models that exist in the country where they have developed some hybrid strategies that involve multiple departments to get the message out, to be consistent in enforcement. When we found out, for example, that Colorado State University was able to cut the calls for disruptive parties by 80% by implementing a program, that didn't end the parties, that just put those parties with accountability and control. That started getting our attention, when we found that other schools have been able to work on the rental issue and be able to come up with extraordinarily good materials, and I would point to Western Site for Off-Campus Living. The Campus Community Coalition has posted some remarkable materials that all students are getting now and getting in their very first year. I think that's a really good step towards it. In terms of litter control, dealing with the educational campaign, building better relationships with the new large student providers of housing off-campus, looking at expansion of the RPZs, and getting to smarter land use enforcement, we think that's the more proactive way and more likely successful way to address many of the behaviors that have been described in this council chambers. Towards that end, we currently will be submitting this week a grant application for the Washington Traffic Safety Commission, and the reason is, they're interested in any device we can come up with that would keep kids from drinking and getting in cars, from, for example, those large parties or other social get-togethers, especially those who live off-campus. That's a real target. We think we might have a high likelihood of success. That grant would allow us to study those programs from those 200 peer institutions and communities that have been successful, and come back with the right blend that would work for our community to present to you. So we come before you today, my colleagues and I, to talk about how we formed a project team, we've identified some peer institutions, we're applying for funding, we think this is a good approach, we think we'd like to come back when we are able to see the results of it and say, boy, this is apples to apples, it would work here, and would represent a smarter use of our resources, and this may not work, but it was very interesting that we saw it. This would likely involve us sending a team to go observe our opposite numbers in those communities, and potentially, when we find the best blend, and perhaps the best program, invite an individual to come back here to present to this body and share with the greater community the information that they've found in implementing it. So we're here to answer any questions you might have on this approach, and we will return subsequent to our investigation with recommendations.
Okay. Any questions for Rick? Michael?
Small one. Thanks, Rick. I think it's a great idea, something important to look into. If we get this grant, is there an expectation that there might still be some costs borne by the city that aren't covered by the grant, and how big might they be?
Yes, the costs are our time, staff time. That is the entire cost. We basically use that as the overmatch, because the grant would cover our travel expenses and the cost of bringing in expertise back, as well as printed materials to help focus the first wave of implementation, but our staff time overweight that, so that would be the cost, and we're already budgeted for it.
Dan?
What's the timeline on the grant?
As I understand it, and Officer Osterkamp can speak more specifically to it, it's very short turnaround. We should know in...
Why don't you come up, sir? Nice to see you in that uniform there.
Thank you. It's my day off, so. So the turnaround on the grant should be roughly about two months. What will happen is, we'll, we actually have the final draft of it right here. Once we go ahead and we sit down as a whole again, go through the information that's on there, we'll submit it, so hopefully it'll be submitted sometime by the end of this week. Once we submit that, given Christmas break and New Year's is around the corner, I'm assuming it's going to push our timeline a little bit further out. So once we get back, hopefully sometime in January, maybe late January, we'd be hearing back whether or not we've been approved for the grant funds.
Okay.
So the process then would be to review these other programs and then bring this back for a 2017-2018 application for the academic year? Is that roughly correct?
We are already on track to implement a number of the processes we've described. Those are already going. If we have changes we need to propose, for example, in code to fully implement it, we'd come back before this body. If there are changes in process, it's more of an awareness issue, and we'd come back and present those opportunities for you to consider. At this point, we're not quite certain exactly what those changes would be, since we haven't gone to the details of seeing what their codes look like and how they enforce them and how they work. We might, in the best case, have to make minor tweaks, and with existing enablement, be able to continue. We, on the worst case, would have to take a more focused approach and prepare some alterations.
Roxanne?
Well, I first learned what town and gown was in 1995. That was when I was going to Central Washington University, and at that time, boy, it was a social war between the town and the gown. So going through that experience, what I can say is, I'm really glad that we have this coalition, and we look at these issues in a much different way, so it's not the social war, and it's more us working together to try to come up with solutions to these various issues. So thank you.
Terry?
Yeah, I'm also really glad to see this moving forward. I think there's been great progress that was already done with the Campus Community Coalition and the Police Department that has cut down dramatically on the big parties that we used to have here, where streets would block down. We still have them occasionally, but not nearly as many as what we used to have, have, but I think this will take it a step farther, and I really look forward to, especially in my ward, where there are a lot of students and a lot of parties, but they've done a good job in reducing at this point, but I really look forward to seeing what we can do with this.
Jack?
Yeah, I appreciate the effort on this, and I think it's, you know, it's very timely, especially with the rental registration program coming on board. I think that the idea of having expanded RPZs is probably a tool that will have to happen, and of course, it's going to get into a situation of who pays for it, and the university's been paying for, you know, the existing program, but I guess when we get into expanding it and whether or not there's going to be pushback financially from the university, I do want to stress the fact that the university's institutional master plan, during the last two plans, it went from 36% on campus student housing to 30% on campus student housing, and by doing that, it has pushed a lot of the student population onto off-campus housing, and also the impacts of that particular move. So it's, you know, to me, it seems like the RPZ thing should not have to be paid for by the city if the cause of it is because the university's chosen to not provide as much student housing on campus.
Rick?
If I might, it does cue an issue in that that exchange from on-campus housing to off-campus housing is nationwide, that in looking at it, this is not an uncommon issue, where about, a period about 20 years ago, folks stopped building dorms, and dorms sort of disappeared because of cost, and the impact to some of the communities has been profound. In looking at our research, in St. Paul, Minnesota, there's five colleges that no longer provide any on-campus housing and had to deal with the effects of whole neighborhoods changing wholesale within a 20-year period. What I can say, though, is, to conclude, is whatever we implement, we believe that the record shows and looking at other communities, it's a three-and-a-half-year effort to implement, because you need to change a culture, and you need to cycle through a complete set of classes. So you have to take someone from a freshman with an expectation, work them through to a senior, and if you do that, the incoming students who backfill are brought into a culture that's already changed.
Okay. Is that it? Thank you very much, Rick. This is really exciting. Thanks to all of you for helping with this. Our next item is annexation agreement with Watcom County Fire District Four.
Good afternoon. Bill Hewitt, Assistant Fire Chief. Today we come before you with an agreement in preparation for a possible annexation known as the East Baker View Mount Baker Highway Annexation, and this agreement is pursuant to the, in 1997, the city council and the commissioners from Fire Districts Two, Four, and Eight all got together and developed an interlocal that outlined how we'll deal with annexations as they occur in the future. This agreement, basically, that's before you today, is a result of that '97 agreement. We got together in anticipation of the possible annexation, we sat down with Fire District Four, looked at the, based on that '97 agreement, what our contractual obligations were, and we took that framework, as well as, this also has some rollovers from other annexations we did in 2012, and put together a final agreement here that satisfies both our contractual obligations under the '97 agreement, as well as puts the, in the best light, the fire protection needs of both the city and Fire District Four here for the future in that annexation area.
Okay. Any questions? Michael?
One of the things that the city of Bellingham is getting is continued use of the Britton Loop training facility. Is that forever, or just for the life of this agreement? How long does that go on?
That goes on for the life of the agreement, is what we're looking at, so as long as we're, this agreement, like I said, pulls in a couple of different things, because it pulls in the mitigation of the tax money for the proposed annexation area, but it also has us exchanging some services, where Bellingham Fire Department provides services to certain areas of Fire District Four where we're closer, and then in trade, we get use of the training facility. So as long as we're in that exchange of services, we will continue to be able to use their facility.
So if we continue to have mutual aid agreements, the Britton Loop will probably be part of that negotiated agreement? I'm just wondering if we're losing anything in the long run with Britton Loop or whether...
No, right now, it would be, our anticipated outcome here would be to continue, as long as we have joint service agreements, that the training facility would be part of those joint service agreements. It is, that training facility right now is the only training facility that we have as a city, so it's important for us to be able to continue that cooperative use there.
Good. Roxanne?
I move that we approve the annexation agreement with Watcom County Fire District Four.
Second? Motion been made in seconded. Any further discussion? All who are favorable say aye.
Aye.
All who oppose? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you, sir. The next item is an update on jail-related concerns. Mr. Heinweit?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, oh, Madam Mayor.
Well, I just wanted to say we've sent, or sent, distributed a letter to you that went to the sheriff this morning. Peter and Brian will go through a lot of the details, but since the election, there have been ongoing discussions. I was very happy when I heard that there was going to be an extension of our contract for six months. This letter is a result... This letter is a result of the contract being extended, having changes in the contract that we did not believe we could comply with. So, that's all I have to say. Our, our goal is public safety, based on no bill, no booking restrictions, and of course, we'd like to keep any inmates that we have the responsibility for in the city, if at all possible, either in the jail or in an alternative.
Kate, go ahead, Brian.
Good afternoon, Brian Heinrich, Mayor's Office. It's a nice segue into the memorandum that's in the packet. We've taken very seriously the request from the Waukesha County Sheriff about the overcrowding of the facility and steps to reduce that. You'll see we've identified what essentially is a four-fold approach, looking at our existing programs and practices, better utilization of existing jail alternatives, and many of those are listed on page 174 of your packet. In addition, I think I would add that on page 177 of your packet, we reference a number of the existing programs and practices that are in place today, that we, we do utilize and would like, I think, to expand upon. Additionally, there are other opportunities for reduction in diversion that we are exploring. Perhaps Peter might wanna mention some of those, if he'd like. And then I think finally, or last of these, is looking at another jail services provider. Previously, we'd mentioned that we'd had discussions with Yakima County and the use of their facility. I, I think there, you'll see in the letter that the mayor sent the sheriff today, there, near the end, she reiterates that our preference is to keep the people that we're responsible for in Waukesha County. That's, I think, one of our first goals. We think, again, going back to the existing alternatives that are available today, or some of those other alternatives, like electronic home monitoring, that we can do that. But we also understand that on an as-needed basis, we will potentially need another facility. So in your packet as well, there is the draft agreement with Yakima County. We do intend to bring that agreement back to you next Monday for approval. We would like to have that in place to meet the sheriff's deadline of January 1st, that he's told us where overcrowding or reduction could occur at that time. But additionally, I think I would, to the mayor's comment, just say that, yes, we certainly welcome extending the existing contract that we have with Waukesha County. That would be, for six months, would be very valuable for us, and we think the steps that we'll take, which are outlined in that memo, we would achieve the goal of, of reducing the overcrowding situation at the jail, while also maintaining our integrity around public safety. So with that, any questions or comments? Peter?
Yeah, Peter Raffato, City Attorney's Office. I'd just like to frame it also from my perspective. First of all, the memo that you see, as well as, while the memo that you see was really developed, I think in a very positive way, one of the positive things that we've seen is work groups internally here to the city that have really done a lot of work, had a lot of dialogue, and I'd like to acknowledge Darlene Peterson and Commissioner Smiley, along with Judge Lev. We've had regular meetings in not only reminding ourselves of the existing programs, and they put together the flyer that you see in the packet, for existing programs that, but for those programs and practices, we would have higher incarcerations at rate at this time, but also in developing the ideas moving forward. And one theme, I think, that runs throughout is, you know, we wanna look to existing mechanisms and a unified approach, where we have jail alternative programs at the county. We wanna see where we can better utilize those, as well as other programs. And then another theme is the reality that we have, come January 1, if we are forced to reduce the Bellingham population, we have DUI offenders, we have DV offenders, and there are some offenders that are not going to be eligible for an alternative. And therefore, I just wanna stress that it's important to have that alternative facility on an as-needed basis, contractually in place. When you start talking about the jail alternative programs that we've listed, and we can go through those if you want to, or you can answer questions, ideally, again, we would be working, and we will work with the county. We've proposed some of these through the county and through the task force. As of this morning, we were developing a list that hopefully will get some traction with the county. If we have to, we can look at a third-party vendor for that purpose. We don't want to, but we will be exploring that as well, whether it's electronic home monitoring and whatnot. And the other detail is, I think we do, we'll be looking forward to coming back on the 14th with some form of a contractual extension. That's the goal. So in addition to the Yakima contract, we hope to have that developed as well for the 14th. I think the county said, I've heard the county say it's a work in progress, it's a work in progress from our perspective, too. Some of these moving parts, since we haven't done some of these things before, we will be having to make adjustments as we go along.
Kate.
Oh, yes, go ahead.
And just as, as in closing, the things that work for us to divert our inmates from the jail would, would be things that would work for all the other cities and the counties. So, as a county system, we could be working together to use our existing diversions and add to those, and the whole system would be, would benefit. Having said that, if in fact, the sheriff's request for us to remove people January 1st or earlier than that happens, we, we do believe that for public safety and safety for the employees at the jail and the inmates in the jail, that we need to have an alternative that might, we might have to implement ourselves, but I wanna say again that that's not our, that's not our desire. We would rather do it with, with the county and in a countywide manner.
Michael.
Yeah, this jail saga's been a kind of a long, unhappy story in many ways, but I think I'm seeing some silver linings. I'm seeing silver linings with the renewed energy within our municipal court system, across the way in the county jail. I think we might actually get a better system in the end, so that's actually a nice, positive silver lining. I also appreciate the, some of the very kind of clear things that you're outlining here in your letter, Kelly, but number four confused me a bit. What's, what's being got up there? It's basically saying, keep in mind that judicial processes are outside our control. Therefore, what? Are we afraid that things will happen?
That's legal talk.
I can address it. So if you look in the packet, there was a proposal to modify, not just extend, but, but extend the Waukesha County contract with Bellingham with some notable modifications. Things like getting an inmate out of the county jail two to four hours after arraignment. Keep in mind that we're gonna be dealing with a facility that's been, if this, if the Yakima contract is approved, that's very amenable to transports, but we have to be realistic about how frequent those transports will be. So anyway, but back to this proposal by the county, there was language in that proposal about when, for example, initial appearance or first appearance, a legal process, criminal justice process, would occur. And we just wanna make it clear that there is a separation of powers between the judicial branch and the administration, and we don't want to be putting into contractual terms something that's really governed by court rules and state law. And we can certainly work really hard with the county to develop workable plans, whether it's an alternative or a transport, but we don't wanna be trying to make it appear that we can agree contractually to something other than what the court rules and state law provide in terms of when first appearance will occur, for example.
All right, thank you.
Dan.
I'm just curious as to why the, or why the city landed with the Yakima facility versus the SCORE facility, which is a little bit closer.
So, you see the, the bullet points listed for, in the memo, as far, as far as what is offered by Yakima. One of the things that's offered by Yakima that was important to the city is the as-needed aspect to it. They have capacity, but it's not like we have to buy a certain number of beds and pay for those beds, whether we use them or not. So it allows us some flexibility. We can keep inmates here, we can look for alternatives, but when we have that need, we can either have a scheduled transport or with notice, a transport on an as-needed basis. They offered, they, they pointed out some very good programs within their jail in terms of healthcare and then mental health. There's some evaluations, there's some intake evaluations that occur very, very early in the facility. Yeah, they have certain programs that are delineated in one of the bullet points in the memo. And they provide transportation. They have a, they have a very, they have a very robust set of, they have transportation vehicles, they have personnel. I don't believe SCORE, SCORE would be a matter of finding our own transportation. So that's a big part of it. The reality is that Yakima is set up for this, and, and I talked to many jurisdictions. We talked to Snohomish County, we talked to Shalane County, we talked to Pierce County, we talked to Nisqually Tribe, and obviously Yakima. We talked to King County briefly. Some of them more brief than others, because Yakima really rose to the top in terms of the preferred alternative, given where we are right now on a fairly short timeframe, but also with the benefits outlined in that memo.
Okay, anything else? Yes, sir.
I was gonna bring this up under old and new, but I think it's germane to this discussion. Last week, I went to Spokane for a couple of days on this matter, in regards to trying to learn more about where Spokane, the city of Spokane and the, and their counties also, and where they, where they are in relation to their issues, which are similar to ours, but they are much, what I would characterize as further down the road. Through former Bellingham and Waukesha County attorney, Brian Beggs, who now practices law in Spokane, I was able to meet with the city prosecutor, the public defender, a city council member, the mayor's director of local government, and multicultural affairs, a municipal court judge, members of Smart Justice Spokane, members of the local NAACP chapter, the county prosecutor, Washington State Universities, and the Vera Institute's lead technical advisors for the MacArthur Foundation Grant, which they're trying to get, the Step Two, among others. This is all within two days, kind of a whirlwind tour, obviously. I was able to bring back some findings. I'm just gonna just hit the bullet points here and put this in an email to staff and council at a future date, but they did establish a Law and Justice Council, which is sort of a governing framework for how they look at their incarceration issues. They've established a relicensing program, so driving while licensed suspended, third degree is addressed. They've had a 26-point drop in the number of people who are jailed for that. They have a community court, which I thought was quite innovative. I met with Judge Mary Logan in Spokane, so she sentences offenders who commit lifestyle crimes in the downtown Spokane Corps, which are largely crimes that are not good for business, and they, the offenders are then treated through service providers largely, so they are able to get WIC and get job training and literacy training, so it really addresses some core issues. They also have a portability court, which is a court that can hear through memorandums of understanding, hear and try cases from multiple jurisdictions, so the offender stays in the system to a lesser degree. They've basically dropped simple possession, they've adopted a lead-type program or law enforcement assisted diversion program like Seattle has, and they also use what are called hotspotters. Those are professional healthcare and nonprofit service providers that address super-utilizers of resources, so kind of like our community paramedic program to some degree, but I think it's much more, much more broad. So I'm gonna package that up into an email and send it off to, to staff and council, but I just wanted to take a couple of minutes here today to, pardon me, to let folks know that I did make that trip last week.
Okay, thank you, Dan. Anything else? Kate, thank you. Oh, go ahead, Brian.
Just quickly, sir, I just wanted to, to say, the letter that we distributed earlier is in response, that was actually a request at the sheriff, we're very appreciative of his willingness to sit down and discuss ways that we can move this forward. So I just did wanna mention that, that the items in the letter are, were requested of us, and that's our work group put together those as a way forward to achieve our goals. I just wanna say.
Kate, thanks for the update. We'll now go to the next item in ordinance, amending Bellingham Municipal Code regarding the duties of the hearing examiner. I would imagine that's Counselor Peter?
Yeah, let me, I'm still getting past the jail material.
Someday we'll get past.
So, this is a follow-up item to the hearing examiner presentation, and there was, I think, direction from council, there was the request to limit the number of presentations, given that we no longer, we now have a contract hearing examiner, and as well as the hearing examiner's noting that the caseload probably didn't warrant, there wasn't that many new issues that would come on, come up on a six-month basis, and it would help her schedule, it would save some money if we, if we trimmed the presentations and the reporting down. Now, I will acknowledge that I think the discussion at the council was to have a written report on a six-month, and then a presentation at a one-year point. In talking to the hearing examiner and thinking about that, I mean, she, she would not be providing a presentation without a written report, so it really amounted to, to written reports anyway. So I built in some language in the ordinance, I believe, that basically would trim this down to one presentation, one written report, but acknowledging that at any, at any point in time, the city council or the mayor could request an interim report or, and/or presentation. So that was an ordinance, an amendment to the ordinance or to the code, as well as it was discovered that, kind of a housekeeping matter, that legal counsel, so when we had a, an employee hearing examiner, legal counsel to the Civil Service Commission was being provided by the hearing examiner. That was not something that was envisioned with a contract hearing examiner, and I think it's left over from days when we had a heightened concern about conflict of interest. We've been advising the Civil Service Commission and the legal department. We keep a firewall as needed, it's almost never needed, there's not that much legal advice required, so this freezes up to do what now we've been doing now for about, I don't know, six months to a year in terms of advising the Civil Service Commission with the legal department.
Kate.
Jack, then Roxanne.
Move approval.
Ah, he's beat, he's, he's getting quicker towards the end of the game here. Okay, motion been made and seconded? Is there any, so you're relevant, oh, I'm sure you are. We haven't banged the gavel for the end of the year yet, folks, that might take a long time. Okay, motion been made and seconded? Any discussion? All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Seven-zero. The next item is a resolution to the Bellingham City Council calling on the Washington State Legislature to pass a paid and sick leave law in 2016. Has everybody had a chance to read this? And is there any? Go ahead. Oh, sure, go ahead, Mark.
Oh, hi, just wanted to provide just a quick overview. Mark Gardner, Legislative Analyst for the Bellingham City Council. As requested, I've written a resolution for you in draft form to take a look at, and wordsmith if needed. The things in there include some discussion of the gaps in paid sick leave coverage locally and nationally, positive public health impacts of paid sick leave, impacts on family income, especially for low-income families without leave, discussion of the role of safe leave in protecting victims of domestic violence, discussion of the benefits to business of paid sick leave, support for creation of a level playing field for businesses, and uniform benefits for families across the state as being one of the main intents behind the resolution. And lastly, the resolution supports, puts the council on record as supporting a statewide law and commits the council to engage in education and outreach in support of a sick and safe leave law, and I'm hoping those are the points you wanted in this resolution. I think they were, but let me know if I need to change any of the wording.
Kate, thank you, then Roxanne.
Mark, thank you for putting this together. I think you did an excellent job. It's very comprehensive. There is one thing that I would like to add to this, and underneath the...
What page are you on?
I am on page 205, and it is the list of the seven items under which we are asking to support for statewide sick leave. One item I would like to include is the use of first-day use be applied to sick pay. That is the portion that is, and I don't know if that's the correct terminology, but that's one of the things that we discovered through this process that was particularly egregious, is that employees were not allowed to use their sick day until the third, some till the fifth day, that they were actually sick, so, which appeared to be a very important thing in regards to people being actually able to use their sick able to use their sick pay at the appropriate time. And I believe the terminology is first-day use. I can work with you to find out the appropriate definition for that, but I would like that to be included in our draft.
That surely makes sense. We heard that during a hearing. I know that some people were concerned about that, and there are some specific instances of where there's a delay, and so you're very sick, but you still have to come in. So, so certainly I can add that as the eighth item.
And you have all that done before tonight's meeting, and we can...
Oh, certainly, yes.
Okay. Roxanne?
Well, I just wanted to let the council know that one of the reasons I brought this forward at the local level was because last April, we have Senator Mike Baumgartner, and he is the Chair of the Commerce and Labor Committee. And last April, it was really unfortunate because what he did for the Senate about this issue is he canceled that meeting to make sure that the Senate would never hear paid and safe sick leave for the rest of the year. So that was one of the major reasons why I wanted to bring this to your attention. And I don't predict any changes will occur. I think that the Senate will probably act the same way, unfortunately. So with all the rationale that we have in this resolution, I hope you'd consider this motion to add this language, that if the Washington State Legislature does not pass an acceptable paid and safe sick leave law, the Bellingham City Council will revisit this issue. Within, revisit this issue within six months of the legislature turning it down.
Actually, Roxanne, what I was thinking was, how long did you want to have the state have a bite at the apple before we, before we come back to council?
If the state turns it down six months after that, I think we should take it within six months.
With when, when legislative session or two or?
Yeah, the first legislative session.
Okay, is that a motion? Or a request? Or motion? It's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion been made and seconded, any discussion? Dan?
I'm just wondering, this is to your point, Roxanne, I'm just wondering if, if the businesses that came forward to speak to this issue, if they, if they can be involved in this process. So what I heard largely was, this needs to be a state thing, over and over again from local businesses that came and testified here or wrote us letters, emails. Some of those businesses, at least two of them, have contributed max-out donations to our current local 42nd State Senator, the 42nd District. So I'm wondering if, if he, if that senator would listen more to businesses that contribute to his political campaign, because those businesses have said, we want this to be a state thing. So I'm just wondering how that could be, could be leveraged, and maybe that's, that's probably outside of this body, but maybe the proponents that are, that put this forward could use that information to help get this thing at least looked at at the state level. Because I do share your concerns that it's, it might be a tougher, tougher salt at the state level. I do, I do fundamentally believe that it should be a state issue, however, but I'm just wondering if those businesses could, could work on behalf of making that a state res, or a state ordinance or law.
Go ahead.
My prediction is it will not become passed ever by our Senate, and therefore, it puts it back in the game of the local jurisdictions to make the case in point. The best way we can make the case in point is by passing it through the local jurisdiction, so that if enough cities do this, then maybe the Senate will pass it.
Let, let me just say that this has been, whether or not you agree on one side or the other, it's been brought to the attention of a lot of people, not just business people, but people out in the community. But I want to tell you, we're living on a different time when this first came up. We're looking at over 500 jobs that are going to be eliminated at IntaCo. We're looking at another 120 jobs that are leaving our community with CH2M Hill. I cannot, in all good conscience, vote for this resolution with the added language where this is hanging over everybody's head, and I'm talking about the business community. All you have to do is leave Bellingham and go five miles north, and you're in Ferndale, folks. They can build any business they want in Ferndale, in Linden, in Nuxac, in Sumas, and I can guarantee you, it's not going to happen out there unless it's a statewide issue. Now, I think there's an opportunity, if two of those senators that do not let this go forward in the Senate are going to be defeated one of these days, and I don't know how long it's going to take, but I cannot, I just can't support having this hang over this business community's head, in our head, for another six months or a year. And, you know, we're receiving emails where it's calling, they're calling this unconscionable and not doing the right thing. This is a state issue and a national issue. We're not Seattle. We cannot compete with Seattle economically or any other way, shape, or form. But sending this to the legislature and letting them know how we feel and how strongly we feel about this, sure, it'll be a state issue, then I understand the next thing we'll hear is, well, they'll go to another state. Well, okay, that's a little bit different than leaving, jumping one city to another. Now, if we're going to ask for economic vitality and more businesses coming to Bellingham, if we allow this language to go forward, and that we're going to revisit this in six months or a year, boy, I'll tell you, I'd take a second look of rebuilding something or building a new business in Bellingham. And, look, I've said it before and I'll say it again, this should be nationwide. We shouldn't even be having this discussion under the third whereas, it, I mean, it says it all. Whereas the United States is only developed nation in the world, does not require employees to evade sick leave. That's a pox on the president, on the Congress, on the legislature, on everybody that has jurisdiction over something like this. And it's absolutely amazing that, that we don't have it. But in the climate that we're in now, when people are cutting back, and I've already heard of two or three businesses that'll be accompanying IntaCo, because there's a lot of service providers out there that their sole business is sending them product. And when that goes, there's some in Bellingham, there's a lot in Ferndale, it's just a very, it's a very scary time. So I want to be as strong as we can with this. Let's get more people to call in, let's get more people to write, let's be the leader in sending out resolutions like this, and hopefully the Senate will, will act. So that's just me. Go ahead, Kelly.
Well, I, I, I did want to reinforce something that Roxanne said, because in a short session with a controversial subject, probably nothing will happen, and I agree with that. So if we really want the state to do something, we would have to give them a long session, regardless of the makeup. So I guess I would suggest that if we want the state to do it, that we might want to consider not making that timeframe that short, because basically then, we're put in the position of doing it ourselves, because it's not gonna, I would be very, very, very surprised if it happened in this election year.
Yes, go ahead, Rox.
I'll be happy to withdraw my motion, because it doesn't seem like there's council favor for it, but I just ask the council, in addition to thinking of the business concerns, which I'm hearing too, first of all, we also need to support thousands of workers that really need such protections and just such general provisions that would help. And also, I think you, everyone will start to see that the cities that adopt this, employees go to those places and businesses tend to locate there when cities, when there are other cities that don't. So just please watch with me as this progresses, and so we can start to see how important this will be for our jurisdiction to support our thousands of workers.
Okay. Yes.
In lieu of what the mayor suggested, the resolution does say paid and sick leave law in 2016, would we consider saying 2016, 17, in order to give the legislature time to?
Well, it depends on if you, if you want the state to do it, that's a discussion for you. I wouldn't say 16, because I doubt if it will happen in 16.
You just state it with no date? Is that what you're saying?
Well, I, that's up to you, but I wouldn't probably say 16.
What'd you say, Michael?
I would leave 2016. Don't, don't give them wiggle room to push it off. It may happen, but let's at least send a strong resolution.
Okay. Well, another thing that I want to say is, there's been, and I know we've dove into many things over the years, resolutions, a lot of resolutions, because we have adamantly no control over a lot of things that we've done resolutions on. But one of the biggest things I've heard, and I'm not going to disclose any, but I've heard from some of our own employees who understand that the fate of their existence sometimes, and, you know, we laid off 75 people in, during the recession. It was a, it was a rough time. And we're responsible for every bargaining unit contract that comes across our desk. And quite frankly, those are the people that we need to take care of. We also need to make sure that our congressional leaders and our state leaders are taking care of everybody. To cherry pick city versus city, you know, I know they have it in San Francisco, I know they have it in Seattle, but we can't compare ourselves to those, those two cities when it comes to the size of the whole situation, when you can just drive a few miles down the road and start something else. So is there any further discussion? Now, the motion is to, no, you withdrew your motion, didn't you, Roxanne? Okay, Roxanne withdrew her motion. Do we have to take a motion on what Pinky wanted to include? Or we just have Mark put it in the resolution and we'll vote on it tonight?
Yeah, I mean, if you want, you could just, as a committee vote to approve as amended would be clear, I think.
Okay, is there a motion to approve as amended?
I'd like to move that we approve as amended, approve motion as amended for the resolution of the paid sick leave.
Second.
Okay, motion been made and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries seven zero. The next item is approval of minutes. We have the minutes of, the afternoon minutes and the evening minutes. The first afternoon minutes are from November 16th. Do we have a motion for the November 16th?
Move approval. Second.
Motion been made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries seven zero. Then we have the Community and Economic Development Special Meeting of November 4th.
Move approval of the meeting minutes, November 4th, Community and Economic Development Committee?
Second.
Motion been made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries seven zero. All their new business, Terry?
Yeah, I just wanted to, over the Thanksgiving week or whatever, we had the event that took place at Western, and I just wanted to acknowledge those recent events that took place at the university, this deeply saddened that we still have this type of racist behavior in our city. And I want to offer my support, and I hope the support of this council, to the students and faculty who've been threatened by this kind of racist activity, and to say that we stand, or I stand, with them in this battle against this type of threatening racist behavior. Western Washington University is an important part of our community, and as a community, Bellingham strives to be inclusive of all people, and as such, we need to be there in support of the victims and standing strong against the racism, racism in all of its form. I just want the students and the faculty members to know that we do support them, and we will not tolerate that kind of racist behavior. And we don't want to see that going on, and we will do whatever we can to support them in this, as we go through with this as a community.
Okay.
I think as a parent of children of color, I recognize Bellingham for people of color, for students of color, they face a whole lot of things that we don't recognize. As a parent of children of color, I've had to go to the schools when there's been threats, when people have been called nigger, when they've been called all these different names, and deal with it. And as most of us, I look in this room, we're all white, but we have no idea how alone many of the student, I'm sorry. Yes. All but one are, are pretty much white in this, in this, in this room. And so we don't realize a lot of times how alone students of color that moved to this community or grew up in this community can feel when these kind of threatening behaviors happen. So I just want to, you know, acknowledge for myself, and, and I'm assuming from our council that we do stand in support of, of them, and, yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Terry. Any other old or new business? I have one item, I asked by an email here a few days ago about our calendar, and I made a mistake by putting down the spring break request. We would meet on April 11th and 18th instead of the 4th and 11th, if that's okay with everybody. April is newly elected, she doesn't want to miss a meeting. And, you know, years ago, when we had council members that had kids in school or their spouses that taught, we never, we never met on spring break. So if there's no opposition, we'll change the meeting dates in April, from April 4th to 11th, to April 11th and 18th. That'll give us two consecutive meetings, but 11th and 18th. Do we have to do that by motion, Peter, or just change the calendar? Change the calendar. Boy, you're getting lenient all of a sudden now, huh? Okay, is there any other old or new business? Okay, we're, we're right on time, folks. We have three executive session items. The first one has been canceled. It's City Enforcement Action, Allen Mariner, approximately 15 minutes, that's been postponed. Labor negotiations, 10 minutes, potential litigation, 15 minutes, potential litigation, 10 minutes, 35 minutes. So I'll be back at a probably 10 to 4 to sign off.